Executive session has been paused so we can go into our 4:00 PM work session, which now I'm calling to order. And first up, we have a proclamation for AmeriCorps Week, which is March 12th through March 18th. And if I could have you guys come. And with us, we have Akita Jones, Dahlia Trickett, Anastasia Broadus, Nikisha Tyler, and Ally Mathie. So whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize that dedication and commitment of the more than 1.2 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and millions more who have served in AmeriCorps seniors and their community partners, and to encourage more Americans to follow their footsteps in service. And whereas service is a hallmark of the American character, does American character and has the unique ability to bring people of all backgrounds together in common cause. And throughout our history, citizens have stepped up to meet our most pressing challenges of the day by volunteering in their communities. And whereas AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps seniors volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, patriotism by making an extensive commitment to serve, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas through their service, AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps seniors volunteers strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and the city of Hagerstown as a whole. Now therefore, I, Nikisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, designate March 12th through 18th, 2023, as AmeriCorps Week and encourage our citizens to thank AmeriCorps members for their service and to get back to their own community. And if you guys wouldn't mind, I would love for you guys, somebody to share about the work that you specifically do in this community.
Sure.
Don't fire her.
Thank you. AmeriCorps is here to serve Washington County if and when it needs us. We are here to better the community and to be of service to the community through mediation.
Hello. So mediation in Washington County is one of the programs, one of the big programs in Washington County is we offer mediation to people who are returning home from prison and detention centers here. And one of our main goals is to reduce recidivism. And we do have data to back up that doing mediations before you come home helps with your transition, your successful transition when you go home. And it slows that revolving door that we all know happens here in Maryland. And so reentry mediation, pre and post-release is a big part of what AmeriCorps members help support in Washington County.
Thank you. Eric's coming in for a picture. Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, where can I come over here and get a picture? Nice and awkward.
Good smiles. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Next up, we have the hub at Forsberg State University at Hagerstown. We have James, Mr. James Torby.
It's me, Jamie.
Jamie, I'm sorry. Jamie Torby, Associate Professor. No glasses on, Jamie.
So we're just here to say thank you. That's why we're here. So you might remember back in October, we came very panicked. We didn't have our grant yet. And we were running really low on funds to keep our programming running. And you graciously funded us through the end of February. And so we just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. Our grant has come through, so we are good until the end of September. We have a second grant that just went in yesterday that if we receive it, it's a federal grant and it'll hold us for three years. So we think financially, we're in much better shape. Interesting, it's AmeriCorps Week. We're about to start a partnership with AmeriCorps middle of April. So we will have interns that are working for us under AmeriCorps, and we're really excited about that. We wanted to let you know that the funding helped us. We've been with 52 different families, 111 kids four and under. We now have a partnership with Community Action Council where we're providing care and childcare and child development programming every Thursday night for the next 18 months on a grant project. So we're really excited about that. But we really just wanted to come and say thank you. That was our point.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Oh, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start have our first interview. Sean Flaherty. Mr. Sean Flaherty. What is wrong with my speech today?
Happy Tuesday, everybody.
Hello. How's it, Flaherty?
Good. Happy Tuesday. It's good to finally get to see all of you all in person, Shelley. So and get to watch the videos every week of, it looks a lot smaller in real life than it does on YouTube.
We're so used to it now.
Yeah.
So if you could, I guess, introduce yourself. And we're going to ask you, we're going to go around the table here and ask some questions.
Sure. So I'm Sean Flaherty. I've lived in Hagerstown for about a year and a half now. I'm heavily involved with Dewey Central for Neighborhoods First. I am currently the group coordinator. I sent everybody, I don't know if you checked your inboxes, our previous meeting we did have. And, you know, I work from home, so I work for Integrated Data Services. I'm a product support analyst. I'm also a business analyst. I currently work with DOD. I've been doing, I've been a defense contractor for several years. I've worked at the Pentagon. I've been everywhere. So I was, you know, looking for homes and I really chose Hagerstown because I really like the area. And I really want to get involved with, you know, my neighborhood, my community, and make a difference. And, you know, I was in the military. I was in the Army National Guard for several years. So and I worked in Legislative Affairs for the Secretary of Defense. And I've done about everything you can think of. But I'm happy to be here and I'm really glad that you guys selected me for an interview today.
Captain Brown Shaw is going to start.
So speaking of the city, so what's, for you, what would be your number one priority for the city?
Well, I would say, I am kind of torn between both, but I do think that, you know, I think the crime should be addressed, but also economic development. I think they go hand in hand. I think what I love about Hagerstown is that we're not far from Baltimore and DC. And what attracted me here was you're not paying Baltimore and DC prices. We have enormous potential here. And I also believe the potentials of the people that live here as well. You know, I drive around town. I look at, you know, certain buildings that I know that we can fix up. We can bring businesses here. But I would say those are my two priorities. And I really think that addressing those is specifically working with the police, seeing what more kind of funds we can get. I think you guys did an awesome job with the drones that you had because there's a suicidal man on the railroad tracks. You guys got him. So, I mean, I think the city is making progress. I really feel like it's not being marketed enough. And I'm really somebody that's about doing things. I don't want to go on social media and say, you know, but I'm also kind of like, well, you're complaining about it, but you haven't shown up to Neighborhoods First meeting. You haven't addressed anything, you know, why can't you be involved in your neighborhood? You know, it really begins from the local level up. And I think that's part of public safety, I think, is Neighborhoods First. I think it's a wonderful organization to be part of. I reactivated our group since COVID. And we had a recent meeting and we had a good turnout. You know, and I hope to continuously be involved in Hagerstown, making that contribution. Because in the end of the day, we all want a better place. We all live here. We all have our neighbors. You know, we all want that, so.
Have you read the city's goals and objectives document? And if so, are there areas you would add or advocate for?
Yeah, so I have read the strategic plan. I do like, you know, I think we have a lot. I believe you have some of the funds until 2024. We're still working on those. I've also looked at the urban improvement project. I think with the Hagerstown Cultural Trail, I think you guys are still working on that. And I'm very excited about a stadium coming here and what we can do to really attract people here. I think that, I think there's always more we can add. I think economic development things, but I think that you guys had a very good outline from what I've looked at. I think that we're headed in the right direction. I think we're making progress. And people don't realize a lot of these things don't happen overnight. You know, you want to make baby steps towards those goals. But, you know, I read the strategic plan and I align, my values align with the goals of the city for that. And I really think that, you know, public safety, economic vitalization, because we want folks here, we want them to come to Hagerstown. We want them, you know, we want to get them jobs. We want to get them employed. We want, you know, like I said, I really think crime and those issues go hand in hand with economic development. And I think that, you know, I think our best days are really ahead of us because I think there's just a lot of potential here, so.
So are there any city services that should be reduced or expanded?
Well, I've been here for about a year and a half. I will say, I can't, and maybe I'm the minority when I say this, but I really, I actually like my services here. Like I can't, you know, my trash pickup always comes on time. I like that it's very clean here. I like that we have street cleaners. I like that for the most part, you know, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head that we could really add. I mean, there's always things, and I saw that with the new trash pickup. I believe we're getting new cans and things like that, so. And I support that. So I don't come here, I was really happy coming to Hagerstown when I bought a house here. I thought I had a really nice neighborhood. I walk my dog to Pangborn Park regularly, you know. So I got to meet a lot of my neighborhoods, neighbors with Neighborhoods First. And, you know, I do, I've lived in Alexandria. I lived in Silver Spring and some other areas. I looked in Baltimore, but I chose Hagerstown to be my home. And I definitely think, you know, if anything, we have a lot of good services here. I think there's a lot of good things here. That's why I moved here. And I don't regret that moving here one bit, so.
So since you've only moved here a year and a half ago, you didn't have the opportunity to run for office. But why did you throw your hat in the ring for this vacancy?
Well, I have been involved with Neighborhoods First. I care about the city. You know, I have familiarity here. I did go to South High for one year briefly in 2002 with your previous mayor. I didn't know her, but, and I grew up in Syracuse. I was ten. And so I have familiar, I have friends and family that reside in the area. And like I said, I really, you know, it's a great area to live and want to work in. I mean, I work from home, but, I mean, my home is the rest of Hagerstown too, you know. And I really do believe that. And, you know, I'm hoping that I could get a veterans red, white, and blue. We could bring them here. There's a whole bunch of ideas I throw off. And some of you all got emails about it. But for the most part, I really, you know, I want to make a difference. And I believe with city council, I can do that. And you guys have a lot of important projects coming up. You have a lot of, you know, we're in our best time right now, especially with the stadium and everything else coming here. So I don't want to miss out on that, and I want to be part of that, so.
Beyond the stadium and in a public project, what type of business growth would you like to see in and around the city?
Well, I think that, you know, I, you know, I've spoken to some of our, you know, elected officials, but I also really think that, you know, we need some higher paying jobs here. I really think we can look at tech. You know, I think we are bordering the wealthiest county, Loudoun County beside us. And I think that's something that we can bring here. I think that, you know, I know that the community economic development team here in Hagerstown is working really hard to bring, you know, I think part of that equation is you want to help existing businesses strengthen your relationship with them because we want them to stay here. But I also think you want to go to your way and market ourselves as a city. You know, I think our proximity to DC, I think our proximity to Baltimore, I think we can really hone in on that. And, you know, I think that now that we have a hybrid work model, especially a lot of people aren't going to the office all the time, why not buy in Hagerstown? Why not live here where there's a cheaper standard of living? So I definitely think we can look in the IT sector. Was it Tedco? I've heard that might come here, so I think that's a possibility. But I think that we need to open, you know, the floodgates for all the opportunity for everybody here. And I think that, you know, all types of jobs, you know, I think that people that don't necessarily have a four-year degree should get employed, you know, and they should have a higher, you know, standard of living too. Because, you know, I think there should be economic opportunity for everybody on that front, so.
Regarding homelessness and substance abuse disorders, what is your philosophy in addressing these societal issues?
Well, I've seen this happen in a lot of other cities too, not just here, bigger cities too. I was in Los Angeles and San Francisco last year visiting friends. And it was very dystopian and sad how that was addressed. My plan, I believe, is work with elected leaders and really trying to facilitate. I want those that are struggling with those issues to get help. You know, I don't think anybody wants to lock them away. Nobody wants to, you know, I want to see people to do better, you know, as human beings. Because at the end of the day, they have an addiction. But I also believe that, you know, we also have to make Hagerstown a safe, friendly place for people that want to move here and they want to invest in the city. So I really think it's really working with elected leaders and, you know, with, you know, the police and other, you know, agencies to really figure that out. But I'm not here to say there's a one size that fits all. What's happening in Los Angeles and San Francisco isn't going to be conducive to what's happening in Hagerstown. But I think that, you know, we can definitely, you know, go at that. And I think Hagerstown, if anything, has so much potential here to address that. And it's not gotten to a stage as the bigger cities have, that we can still, you know, really address this.
What do you see as the expectation of the time commitment for a councilperson?
I look at it as a full-time job, not just showing up Tuesday. I mean, we all have to show up and, you know, you're going to grocery store. I'm sure y'all probably get, you know, flagged down by people that know where you're at and say, hey, Shelley, or hey, Bob, and, you know, and blah, blah, blah happened. And, you know, and I look at that when I'm doing Neighborhoods First. I think that, you know, I think it is a full-time job. You might have to show up here once a week, but it's, we're always doing and planning for the city. I spent hours on my slides for Neighborhoods First, and I was happy to do that. Because in the end, I pay for the food. I did everything for my group because I care about my neighborhood and I want to do better. And I would bring that same commitment and dedication on the council's way.
We've got so many who's going to pay for food.
What? That's amazing because we love snacks down here. I get to ask the last question.
Sure.
What could the city do to improve neighborhood stability?
Well, I think promoting Neighborhoods First. I've worked with Ashley. She's been great. I hope that you guys keep her for a while, and I love her. And I think really, we have a lot of good things here. We don't have to go out and completely start from the ground up. We just need to market with what we have and our potential. And I think all of us, council, I think all of us, that's part of our job as well. You know, when you visit a leaders in Annapolis and you're trying to lure businesses here, you know, we want what's best for the city, and I do truly believe that. But I think that Neighborhoods First is an awesome group. I'm so glad to get involved. You know, I bought door hangers for every single house, 300, within Dewey Central and advertised. And I did that, and I don't regret spending my own money to do that, along with buying the food and things like that. Because I care about my neighborhood, you know. And I also get to build relationships with people here. I'm still new here. Don't know everybody, but I want, I bought my forever home here. I'm not moving anytime soon or anywhere. I've lived everywhere in Northern Virginia, Montgomery County. And, you know, I, I like that you are, you know, a smaller city. You have big city amenities. I love the parks here. They're world-class. I love City Park. I love Pangborn. And I love that, you know, you aren't far from a big city if you want to go. I have friends in DC. I still go visit them near U Street and hang out. But I can also be back home, you know, within the same day, so. You know, and I have family that reside here as well, so. You know, and I'm really, in the end of the day, I want everybody helped regardless of you're in the North End, South End, wherever, so.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, that concludes your interview.
You get to go home now.
Okay, yeah, good, good. I got to feed my dog and take him to Pangborn Park.
Yeah, go feed your pup.
I appreciate you all. Yeah, I'm a dog dad, and there's something I do want to address. If you, if you can look into it, I would like a wiener dog race for Hagerstown because I've had to take him to DC.
I'm all about that.
And we're going to celebrate a German heritage here. That's something we should look into.
Steve would love it.
Yeah, yeah.
Steve will lose.
Do they actually run?
Well, mine tried to, but it's the thought that counts, you know.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Ms. Jennifer Gardner. Donna, you need a runner. Donna needs a runner. She needs to run every minute of the day. Stomach is open. Somewhere to split up.
Don't tell me.
Hello, just sitting right down at the end. Right in the hot seat.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Hi, Jennifer. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Can you just tell us your name? And we're going to go around the table here and each ask you a couple of questions. And it's easy, easy as that, or something like that.
All right. My name is Jennifer Gardner. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm so excited.
Awesome.
First question is, what is your top priority for the city?
My top priority is really engaging with the public. I really feel that, you know, being an active listener and really hearing what they have to say and what they want is really important. And being, you know, really out, you know, supporting different businesses, supporting the community in things that are important to them so they feel like they're heard, they're represented.
Have you read the city's goals and objectives document? And if so, are there areas you would like to add or advocate for?
I have read it. For me, there's, that's a hard one. I really feel that safety is a big thing in Hagerstown. And I feel the more we're involved by carrying out our wonderful strategic plans of, you know, the stadium coming in, you know, the most recent, you know, arrest with the, with the drones and, you know, getting the different people arrested. And I thought that was the best way about doing it without, you know, jeopardizing, you know, public safety even when they're out and about driving, you know. You know, you see them and you're like, oh my, but, you know, we're doing it the right way. We're handling things as they should be.
Are there any city services that should be reduced or expanded?
I think we really need to expand more with, you know, the, with people who are having, you know, with the crime. I think we need to expand, not maybe the police, but our community engagement with them. You know, they, there's something that is getting them that they don't feel heard. They don't feel represented, and they're acting out. And that is, you know, then they're acting, they're creating crimes and not getting into stuff because they're upset. And if we can come to them and really listen to them and find out what is the cause, because a lot of times it is anger, it's hurt, it's trauma. And if they don't feel heard and they don't feel like we're really listening to them actively and helping them make their lives better, then they're not, it's going to continue to be the same. You know, that's what I do with my business, is that, you know, my blueprint for my business is that I want my clients to feel that they are at peace. They have, you know, they have that peace of mind. So when they're off doing their jobs, they can live their best lives without having to worry about the stress of what is going on in their own home. They know that their house is going to be safe. They know their animals are going to be safe. And that's the thing for our citizens. They want to be able to go off and do and be their best selves. And if we can't provide them with that opportunity to be heard when they come home, that they feel safe, they feel they have a peace of mind, then they can, you know, pursue good things. They're going to not see the world as, you know, what they can create. They're only going to see what was done to them. They're going to only see the trauma. They're only going to see, they're not going to see past their hurt.
So Jennifer, why are you interested in applying for this vacancy if you haven't run for office?
Well, for me, I have, the reason why I want to run for this actually was inspired by our mayor, Martinez. I was blown away when she became mayor. And I was like, and my friend played for me her YouTube video. And I was like, this person is the best person for her mayor. I was so excited. I was like, I, she inspired me. I was like, I want to be a part of what she, her vision. Like, I know her vision is, you know, Emily's, part of Emily's vision, but in her own way. But for me, I saw it as like, she's someone who knows what she wants and knows how to get it across and has beautiful words in expressing her opinion. And I was like, I can stand by that. She's got great energy. And I was like, I can do that. I can be that. And I was, and right now I have, you know, my plan with, I was on the board for the National Association of Professional Pet Sitters. And my plan has been, since I stepped down in December, was I want to get more involved in the city. And that's one thing I started doing by getting involved with the Chamber of Commerce and being one of their ambassadors, is that I like being able to show up, learn more about the city, be more present for other business owners in the area because I know how important it is for me to have people show up for me. And I just feel that I would love to be able to continue being able to show up for people in the city, in their businesses, their services. I just want to show up and be there and, you know, actually learn to be a better person too. I mean, that's one thing as being a business owner has taught me, is that it's actually made me a better person. It's made me more responsible. And I feel like this would be even better.
What type of business growth would you like to see in the city?
Oh, I would love to see a lot more business growth. I've been kind of thinking, you know, what kind of services could we, you know, draw downtown? Because, you know, with all of the warehouses that are coming in, we do need more services to support them because we all need to make sure that they all are living their greater lives. And everyone needs more, you know, support. What we can do, some ideas, you know, we definitely need, I love how Hagerstown Community College has that incubator with all those different restaurants and different businesses. I would love to see if we can do something more like that downtown too. I'm not exactly sure where we could do it, but that would be something great too. We need, like, one of my favorite events that I go to, I'm a big Groundhog fan. Don't ask me why. It's a funny story. And, but with, I love going to the Groundhog event that the county had. It wasn't, it was, had a lot of the different farmers and different vendors, and I loved it. I was like, this is something fun. I'm like, I want to do more of these. And I just, that's kind of, we need to kind of do, bring more, maybe the farmer markets, you know, like the hub market, kind of bring more that, we know we did, used to have the farmer's market that was down here, but we need to really work on maybe bringing it back, I guess.
Regarding homelessness and substance abuse disorders, what is your philosophy in addressing these societal issues?
Well, a lot of it definitely stems from. Well, a lot of it definitely stems from trauma. And it's, you know, my, I have family members who have suffered from it. Not the opioid, but have, you know, substance abuse issues. Um, it's, it's something we need to make sure we're helping people. You know, rock bottom is not the same for everybody. And if we can make sure we really do give people that support when they're coming out of that rock bottom and they feel like the people want to encourage them, they want, they can get to a position where they can turn themselves around, I think it's really important. You know, it's, you know, a lot of it does stem from people with trauma. And, um, and it's not an easy thing to come from. Thank you.
Uh, what do you see as the expectation of the time commitment for a council?
I see that it's a good commitment. I like the fact that, you know, one I know would be here on Tuesdays, but knowing that, like, there's other, a bunch of different city events, I'm so excited. Well, I'm excited, I've been writing down all of my stuff for the chamber and for the city going, oh, look at this is coming up. Now that COVID has, you know, been, you know, not as much of a issue with, where people aren't going out as much. I'm like, yes, you know, now that I have employees, I'm not as worried about me catching COVID. And now I can go out and I can be a part and support the community. So I love, love the opportunity to be around more.
So I get to ask the last question. What could the city do to improve neighborhood stability?
One thing I was wondering and thinking is, is there an incentive that we can do with local landlords to give them, like, you know, I don't know, it's, well, maybe not. But it's, you know, with the stability, that's hard. Um, well, for me, it depends on where you're living. Honestly, like, if you're, to have stability, it really resides in your peace of mind when you rest. You know, if you have a home that you feel safe in, then that's gonna provide you stability.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
That's it.
Thank you.
You're all done?
Thank you.
Yes, have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Lynn Michael.
Do you need to take the contact? Just message the contact.
What? No, I wasn't. I was paying attention.
Wait a minute now. Please pull out.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
So, if you just state your name and then what we'll do is each of us have a question or two and we'll just go around the table here and you get to, to answer, like a real interview.
All right.
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Stacy Lynn Michael.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yep.
All right, I get the first question. Um, what is your number one top priority for the city?
I'm glad that you asked that because I've put a lot of thought into it over the last couple of days. And I have to say that the top is youth. I think that youth is where our future is. I think we need to look at, um, the exciting things that are coming up, such as the fieldhouse, to provide activities for them. Um, Shelley, I heard you talk about in the state of the city, the MV program. I'd love to learn more about that. But that to me is what's going to help to make this community stronger. Um, when you look at organizations that I'm part of, some of them are having problems getting that younger community, and by far, I'm not young, but even my age, to stand up and volunteer and be part of an organization to make changes and make the community better. So that, to me, would be a top priority for me.
Have you read the city's goals and objectives document? And if so, are there areas you would add or advocate for?
So I've not read the document, but I did watch not only the video that you guys put together of your goals, but I've watched the state of the city several times. Um, because I was so impressed, not only with the message that came in that video, but also listening to each one of you and what your goals were. Um, Kristen asked about my first goal. My second goal is to understand infrastructure better. And we've got some major projects that we have going on in the city. And we need to understand the infrastructure that goes around them. Um, he mentioned the warehouses. Well, housing, you know, if we filled every single one of those warehouses right now, we would have enough homes for them. And if we fill, if we had homes built, would we have the water and sewer to support it? Um, the stadium downtown. You know, I look at that, that area and I love the parking deck and I found out about a second parking deck through talking to a friend. How's that traffic coming in? You know, we have a lot of local traffic here that could be going to an event, but we could also be bringing traffic in from the city. So, um, that was important. I loved, loved, loved the, we went out and knocked door to door to make people part of the meeting, um, for Wheaton Park. I believe a huge part of our goals are listening and hearing what people have to say. And, you know, I'm just gonna say, I say we, because regardless of the outcome of this interview, I wanna be part of it. I'm passionate about this town, I'm passionate about this city. And I say we, and regardless of where this lands, I'm committed.
Thank you, Stacy.
Uh huh.
So are there any city services that should be reduced or expanded?
Great question. I don't know if this counts as a service, but I took a ride around Hagerstown and I noticed that, especially down in this downtown area, we have a lot of parking. But we also just talked about parking decks that are going up. I even went through the parking deck on Friday and looked at how many spaces were taken and how many spaces were empty. And I wonder if we could leverage the available parking to maybe sell that off, you know, reduce the amount of, like, in-town parking that's in these lots and push them towards the parking deck, which is revenue, and then get the revenue from a project that already has the infrastructure. They've got the water, they've got the electric, with whatever they would choose to build there. And then you've got even more economic development. I, I, I look at something like that. Um, services themselves of the city, I can't think of anything that I personally, at this point, um, can see needing to be reduced or even increased. I, I was also excited about the fact that, you know, we didn't have to raise taxes the last two years. That was an important message to me. But I would, that would probably be one of the first things I would dig into, is looking at, you know, where budgets are and what services we have and we're offering and just to see, you know, does something need to be decreased or does something need to be increased?
So why are you interested in applying for this vacancy if you haven't run for office before?
Well, I haven't run for office, but I have been more engaged, especially in the last 10 years, within the community than I ever was before. Um, I'm passionate about this town. I see where things are going. And I wanna be part of the, the differences that this team is making. Um, I know that you all may not agree on everything all the time. Now, they call that crazy.
Stacy.
Call that crazy. There, there may be some differences of opinion. But I also feel like when you guys walk out that door, if they were to ask any of you, you've got each other's backs. And I think that's critical and important. Um, about 11 years ago, my sister, who was only working part-time and did not take a very good care of herself, um, lost her leg and had a heart attack on the same day. And the way I got through this, from a family perspective, because my parents are elderly, is I learned about services that were able and, and available to be there. And I learned that from my boss who'd been part of Leadership Washington County. So what did I do? Several years later, I enrolled in Leadership Washington County so that I could learn and take that and help other people. And I would do the same here. So I'm passionate about the city. I love the future. I'd love to be part of the team, but more than that, I wanna help people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, what type of business growth, uh, would you like to see in the city?
Well, I love that we're revitalizing downtown. Growing up as a child, downtown is where I came to go shopping for clothes and shoes. Downtown was at the core of my childhood. So bringing businesses back here is really, really important to me. Um, being a young adult, going to Frederick and seeing everything that Frederick had, I was like, why don't we have more of that in Hagerstown? And now I'm starting to see that vision come together. It's not the same as Frederick, and we don't want it to be the same as Frederick. We want Hagerstown to stand on its own two feet and be different to draw people in here. Um, I would love to see that some of the growth that we're having downtown, for example, the event center or even the field center for school, bring businesses in. You know, what could we do to bring businesses in to be part of that? And I wanna take away from those businesses, but have them be part of that vision, um, even if it's just, you know, county, you know, working together to bring those businesses in and be part of that vision and, and that going, you know, um, building and growing as we roll those things out.
Regarding homelessness and substance abuse disorders, what, what is your philosophy in addressing these societal issues?
I'm so happy that you asked that. Um, about two years ago, I went on a ride along with Andy Lewis. He was part of my leadership class and I was the first one to say, yes, I wanna go along. Um, I've been involved in going to the Reach Shelter and feeding the homeless. Um, I've been involved in bringing friends that are not necessarily part of a church in to fill dates when they need dates to be filled. So I, I got exposure to homelessness and I'm seeing it. Um, I was interested when, that it's only 2% of our, um, base, as far as residents, are homeless, but it seems like so much more because every year it seems like I see more and more and more. My thoughts are this. I go drive down the street, I see panhandlers now, and I had this conversation with, with Andy. Um, we've gotta figure out why that's happening and see what we can do about it. I know that a lot of, we have a lot of agencies here. We have over 800 nonprofits. And that could bring people here, but they aren't taking advantage of their services. And I'm not sure that putting them in jail is the right thing either, but I do know this. If we don't take care of those problems, those small problems, those small fish is what he described it as, they will become the big fish. They will become other problems that we have in our background. And I don't wanna see that happen. I also know that what people see, standing on a street corner, holding a sign, is not what I see at the Reach Shelter. I go down there, they don't ask for anything, they're very thankful, they couldn't be more welcoming. And they're, we have to change the perception in this community that what they see with the panhandlers is what's true homelessness is. Um, I loved Bridge for Change. I haven't seen a posting in a while, but I know I had a conversation with Shelley early on, when she was, um, a council member, that talked about, hey, some of these other communities are doing things where jobs that people don't wanna do anymore, whether it be a meter reader or pick up trash. Could we leverage those? Now, I know that the homelessness problem is not all people that are down on their luck, they can't afford the rent, they got kicked out. Some of it's mental problems. So I think we've gotta work with the health department. I think that, you know, I would love to be part of a task force or, or even bring a mediator in that could get the agencies that help with homelessness together so that they don't feel like, well, you're, you're taking this away and we wanna do this this way. Work together, people, so that we can make this better. And, and, you know, next year say, hey, our homelessness is, is going down. Problem is turning right into a corner. Um, so that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
What do you see as the expectation of the time commitment for a council?
So I've thought a lot about that as well, because I'm not your traditional person. I don't own my own business. Um, but I do work from home, so that gives me flexibility. But as far as the time commitment, I would imagine that it's probably close to a full-time job. You know, 20, 30 hours a week, maybe more, depending on the week. Um, but I'm lucky and I have flexibility and how I can work around things, whether it be, I heard that there was an opening downtown today, ribbon cutting, which is fantastic and great news. So whether it be, you know, having to drop out and go to that or working together on the weekend to help clean the city up. But I would imagine, in my opinion, it's at least 20 or 30 hours a week, if not more.
Almost finished, Stacy. I have the last question.
Okay.
What could the city do to improve neighborhood stability?
So, in my opinion, we've gotta get the community working together. I mean, we can give them ideas and we can go out and talk to them, but I think we need the communities working together. I, I know that we're not gonna go back to the 50s and 60s. Um, but know thy neighbor and watch out for thy neighbor are staples that we need to have. We need the perception that, um, Hagerstown is a bad town that has all of this crime going on. We need that to go away. And, but I, I think that we need to watch out for one another. I know the small community that I work in, I know my neighbors, they watch out for me, I watch out for them. And that's a start. Um, because then it's, when you see something, you say something, for lack of a better term. Thank you. So.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right.
Thanks. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Bye.
Matthew Schindler.
She's like a hospitality.
You get it like, uh, Olive Garden.
Is that what?
Yeah.
Oh, your number goes off.
That'd be awesome.
Hi, Matthew.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
How are ya?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm doing great. So if you could just state your name for us and then what we'll do is each one of us will ask you a couple of questions. We'll go around the room and, and you get to go home.
All right, very good. I'm Matthew J. Schindler.
Easy enough.
Uh, so I have the first question. So, uh, what is your number one top priority for the city?
Um, my number one top priority for the city, um, is to see a lot of the vacant and blighted properties get turned around, to, to see more life downtown. Um, you know, and to see things grow. That's, that's my big priority.
Have you read the city's goals and objectives document? And if so, are there areas you would add or advocate for?
Um, I have. And, um, I think it's pretty thorough. Uh, I would say that, um, I would very much advocate for as much community involvement as we can. So I think a, a lot of what gets done here, you know, the, uh, the community needs buy-in for that. Um, so the, the more that we can facilitate that, the, the better we are. You know, the more, the more, um, buy-in and the more, um, ownership that we give the citizens, the better. So.
Thank you.
So are there any city services that should be reduced or expanded?
Hmm. Well, I, I will say that, um, I think that our number one resource is our first responders. So, um, I'm not sure if that is all at an adequate level right now, but if it's not, I feel like it should be. Um, you know, because they're, they're our number one resource in the city. So, uh, if they are at full staffing, then I think, um, another priority- So if they are at full staffing, then I think another priority should be to make sure they have all the tools and resources that they need to do the appropriate job.
So why are you interested in applying for this vacancy, Matt?
You know, I thought maybe that would come up, and I thought about providing like a, you know, a written speech or something very formal, but, you know, there's a letter of interest that came in with the applications, so I thought something like this would be better served, just be heartfelt. And simply put, I love the city of Hagerstown. I was born and raised here, lived here all my life. My great-grandparents, up through now, you know, where I'm now a parent here in the city, are all from the city of Hagerstown. And, you know, I try to serve the community in any way that I can, whether it be a committee or a board or, you know, coaching youth sports or, you know, even picking up trash around town. And I think, you know, it's everyone's responsibility to do what they can to make the community live in a better place. And for me, the highest form of service that I could provide or that I can see for the city of Hagerstown is you folks sitting here as the mayor and council. And that's the highest form of service that I see, so.
What type of business growth would you like to see in the city?
I think it's important that we have a very, kind of a balanced growth, because it's sort of a catch-22, right? If you have, you need foot traffic, you know, if you want restaurants to stay open later, if you want, you know, certain type of businesses, it's kind of a chicken before the egg. So I think it's very important that we grow in a very diverse way. So I think retail, I think restaurants, I think services. I think it's good to have an even mix of everything.
Regarding homelessness and substance abuse disorders, what is your philosophy in addressing these societal issues?
I think the answer to that, and I'll go back to what I said earlier, is resources, right? I think homelessness has a lot of causes, you know. We aren't going to fix homelessness, you know. I'm sure if it could be fixed, it would have been fixed by now. But providing all the resources that we can, whether that be tools to our first responders, whether that be drug abuse, you know, and substance abuse treatment or awareness, you know, to try to prevent homelessness, whether that be great programs like Bridge to a Change, whether that, you know, to help our homelessness, you know, help our homeless feel empowered, and maybe provide them tools to provide like a meaningful change to their life, you know, I think that's what we need to be, what we need to provide.
What do you see as the expectation of the time commitment for a council?
Well, I will say I think everyone here has a day job, you know. That said, I think that it's not a job you turn off. I don't think you turn off being a city council member, being a mayor. It's not, there's no off button, there's no, I'm off the clock. So I think, you know, in all reasonable, you know, we all have day jobs, we all have to earn, you know, earn a living wage, but there's no off button, there's no... So to answer your question directly, there's really no cap to that. I don't think you can get away from it, whether you're out at the grocery store and someone stops you and wants to talk about a concern, or whether you're, you know, on your lunch break and you have emails to answer from your day job, whatever that looks like. I don't think there's a cap to that, so.
I get to ask the last question. What could the city do to improve neighborhood stability?
To improve neighborhood stability? Trying to think of how you mean that, but I'll translate that as best as I can. I think that when you get people in the town invested, I think that's what we need for stability, you know. If you want businesses to stick around, of course, they need to feel supported, you know, from this standpoint, from, you know, council and mayor standpoint. But from a community standpoint, you have to get people invested, whether that's art students feeling invested because they have an art installation, or they have a mural that they've contributed to here in town, or whether that means that, you know, someone's relative or friend has started a successful business here in town, whether that means that, you know, someone has been, you know, treated kindly, you know. It's just, it's a building a community investment, and so it's a full effort, I think.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steven.
One more. Last one.
Could have asked all 62 questions.
We are cracking.
This is the first test? I almost just fell over in the first test. Howdy, folks.
Hi, Steven.
Hi, Steven. Okay. So if you could just state your name for us, simple, simple, and then each one of us are going to ask you a couple of questions around the room, and then you get to go home.
Easy enough.
Yes.
My name is Steven Shutey. I live on A36 Armstrong Avenue here in Hagerstown.
Awesome.
First question, what is your number one priority for the city?
Number one priority for the city, me personally, if I were to come into this position, and I can answer that in two different ways, is to understand the strategic plan that's already been put in place from '22 to '23, which I've reviewed, and find out where I can shoehorn my way into best help the city council and mayor facilitate those goals. From a citywide standpoint, it's to continue growth, right? I think that's the number one word that everybody should be talking about right now, is continued growth on the business community, diversity side, equity, and moving through in a way that is fashionable and successful for the city as a whole.
That led right to my next question. Have you read the city's goals and objective document? And if so, are there areas you would add or advocate for?
If you don't mind here, yes. So, side note, quick story. If you go to print off the city's budget and goal packet, make sure you look at how many pages total there are. Otherwise, you use a whole ream of paper and you run out of ink, and then you go to Staples and, well, if I could just print it off here, and then you find out it's $100 to print there, and you're like, wait a minute, you have an iPad, we'll just download it there. But anyway, yes. That was a whole ordeal. Neighborhood revitalization and stability, I've highlighted a few here. Parks and Recreation, Active, Healthy and Living, I believe is one that is very easily into the forefront, especially partnering with meritists and their campaigns. Innovative and progressive governments. I'm a huge, huge employee development and retention guy. I believe that one of the things that the city can do and is currently working towards bettering is talent retention amongst its staff. Just in D-Send itself, I've worked with many different people coming and going, and always sad to see them go because they are such talented people. Community promotion and pride, it's an easy one. I'm a city guy, I'm here to see everybody succeed, I want to see Hagerstown succeed. And then I highlighted miscellaneous projects, goals, and legislative priorities, just for the fact that in my other dealings, I do have a working relationship with current state legislature and the county and all the agencies kind of floating through. So I'm hoping to tear down those perceived silos between city, county, county, state, and bring everybody together and move forward as one.
Are there any city services that should be reduced or expanded?
Ooh. I think the interesting topic right now is going to be trash collection, right? The new post that went out. I'm anxious to see how that's going to work, especially with non-city-approved bins going in and out, but I also saw that there are some plays there to allow people to apply for more bins. You know, when it comes to city programs, the incentive program to get businesses into downtown, you know, I could pull it up to speak to it further, but offering up grants and money to have developers or proprietors come in and, you know, take over a facility or building. And I think the council member, Alshar, spoke to it at the State of the City. I would like to see an expansion upon the White Elephant or the Unicorn Grant Program, where if funds aren't used or allocated, year over year, they're saving in a kitty, and then once a term, that is used to attract a rather large developer to take, incentivize somebody to come in and work with a property that may need the most amount of work or time. Just off the top of my head, those are a couple.
Thank you. So why are you interested in applying for this vacancy if you haven't run for office prior?
It's a very great question. Civic Pride, I guess, would be the easiest one. And, you know, Hagerstown has been so very kind to me for the past, oh, 10 years, 10, 15 years. Starting out working with the library, working with the chamber, watching you guys interact with the community, now working with Hagerstown Youth Council, and the youth council probably is one of the biggest reasons why I'm here. Seeing those kids who have gone through the hardest part of COVID, right? If you think about it, they're COVID kids graduating, still have this notion of Hagerstown can succeed, Washington County can succeed, we can all succeed. When I was told and thought that, you know, the younger generation does feel beaten down and like, no, these kids are in it to win it, they want to see change. And being around them over the past several months has really pushed the envelope of, well, what am I doing? I'm working with the chamber, I'm working with the library, I'm working with all these nonprofits, I'm already at all the events. For me, this is as easy as changing a name tag and changing how I'm advocating. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm always pushing for a better Hagerstown, it's just I haven't done it as a city council member. It's a likely next step for me.
What type of business growth would you like to see in the city?
Any and all. Simply put. I'm a firm believer that incremental growth is still growth. It doesn't need to be large swaths of growth coming to the city. You know, we can't overlook those small wins, and really highlighting those small wins as a city and as a council, I think will go a long way. You know, just seeing a building that has set, or a storefront that has set empty for three months, and now somebody's finally in it. One of the biggest programs I think I missed that I've really enjoyed was when the pop-ups, the pop-ups always show up, because you get to see those storefronts full again. Or the, what was it that you guys just did? The holiday contest decorating the windows and things like that. Those are small things that still count as growth, in my opinion, that I think we overlook as a community, that should be highlighted. But business growth, I just want to see more businesses come into downtown, and if, you know, or to throw one thing out there as just a point, working with HCC and their integrator program to incentivize those graduating that program to come into Hagerstown city to set up shop here as the next likely step. They're still around the support processes from HCC, from the chamber, and now the city can get even more involved in helping those entrepreneurs grow and expand their visions. But yeah, that's it.
Regarding homelessness and substance abuse disorders, what is your philosophy in addressing these societal issues?
You have to meet people where they are, 100%. And I think too often, we as a community can get into this out-of-sight, out-of-mind mentality, and that's never going to create the lasting change I think we're looking for. From my understanding, there are those that want help and seek help, and that there are those that not necessarily seeking it, or maybe want it, or know they need it or want it. I think it needs to be a constant, I want to say barrage in a very nice way, but a constant presence amongst that community and these communities, where there's individuals that need our help. And it's not a constant pressure, it's just a, we're here to help. I'm a big top-of-mind guy. I try to remain top-of-mind in certain things, and I want folks to remain top-of-mind when it comes to me. I would hope that those in a situation like that keep the city top-of-mind as somebody that can help. But I think it's going to be a larger community effort that, you know, the city itself can't just address and figure. You know, Washington County has more nonprofits per capita, I think, than any county in the state of Maryland. Don't quote me on that, it's just kind of something we feel. You know, engaging with those third-party entities to really make sure that we are pushing all the envelopes on how we can work together and collaborate. But I would gently remind, you know, the public in the council that this is not a overnight fix. This is a long narrative that needs to take place, and something that is said and done today has meaning impact six months from now, a year from now, two years from now, but it doesn't mean that it can't and shouldn't be said today or done today.
What do you see as the expectation of the time commitment?
As much as I'm needed, I guess, right? Besides the obvious work sessions, council sessions, I can't preach meeting people where they are if I'm not there and present. I think that one of the best ways to affect change is being held accountable and being in front of somebody. Those of you that do know me in this, in this public, in this community, know that I'm everywhere, all the time. I have no problem changing the name tag, like I said, from what I'm doing now with the library, the chamber, my personal work, Star Community Center, to I'm here representing the council and really representing the city and all of the great things it has to offer.
Last question. What could the city do to improve neighborhood stability?
I hate to go back to saying meeting people where they are, but I, it would be the motto that I want coming out of this interview for me, is the only way we're going to improve stability and improve neighborhoods is understanding what those neighborhoods are going through. And that just doesn't mean that the neighborhoods, you know, surrounding the city center, still going to the north end and talking to those folks, understanding what their problems are, what their perceived problems are. I think, you know, the big phrase that I'm a huge fan of that people need to understand and take to heart is perception is reality. And that's a hard truth to swallow, but how do you change perception, right? You get in there and you talk to people. And then when you start talking to people and start getting hands-on, like actual hands-on, now we're getting into a motion where we can change reality for some of these neighborhoods. But I think it has to come down to a constant, constant, constant movement of the city council, the mayor, rotating into the public, making sure we're engaged, city staff retaining talent so that they're constantly remaining in neighborhoods and the community, remaining engaged. The minute you forget something is the minute something goes bad, or something goes south, in my opinion. So it's just a constant engagement with the community. And what's what we're supposed to be as council members, correct, is remaining engaged.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess nobody else cried, I did have to cry. Thank you very much.
No tears.
Have a good evening, Steven.
Thanks, Steven.
Next up, we have the Hub City Garage Parking Deck Construction Bids, Rodney Tishu, City Engineer, and Eric Daiki, Director of Public Works. Hi.
Good afternoon.
Dean and Jerry.
Should ask y'all interview questions.
Pardon me?
So we should ask y'all interview questions.
I'd be sweating if I was to ask those questions. You have some good candidates there. Well, it's been a few weeks since we opened bids for the parking deck, and since then, Eric and I have met with the low bidder, Cal's Contractors, three times to try to come back to you with options on the parking deck. We've been trying to, what they call value engineer, the design to get the cost down, get the cost down closer to what was anticipated in the fiscal year '23 budget of $10 million. So I'd like to go over a few options with you, and then be happy to discuss them with you. So the first option is basically, it was bid the way, this is the way it was bid. The look of this structure kind of is the hat to the warehouses that were common in the downtown many years ago, brick facades, kind of that punched-open window look. And this design was widely endorsed, I would say, by the Historic District Commission, the Planning Commission, and many other people that just really liked the design as a good fit in our historic district. When the bids came in, it was a little over $11,600,000. We know we can get that cost down a little bit, but if we want to keep that brick design, all those window openings, we're probably going to be somewhere around $11,500,000. The lead time on the brick is not good, it's months and months. So my memo actually has an error in it, I said that this design could be done by May, it'd be it'd be more like August of next year because of the availability of the brick, believe it or not. So that's that option. The second option is to take that design and to simplify the aesthetics of it and do more of a, I would say, a customary design of what a parking deck would look like. So this again is a five-story deck, 395, 397 spaces. The proposal is to leave Antietam Street, which would be the, the front, what we would call the front, it's the part that'll be looking down to the south toward the baseball stadium, it'll be the one that you would see as you drive by, to leave that look the way it was designed with the brick facade. And then also wrapping that facade around 18 feet on the west side towards the Dagmar, so that when you're driving down the street, you still see that brick look as you're glimpsing it, that facade through the opening there at Court Place. But the bulk of the other three sides, the east elevation, which would be adjacent to the cultural trail, the north elevation, which is towards Washington Street, behind the buildings on Washington Street, and then the west elevation would be simplified in what's called a spandrel design, where those, it's not going to be purple, by the way, the purple lines, though, are concrete beams. And we retain the stair towers, we're going to have the art in the stair towers, but the look of this is greatly simplified, there'd only be brick basically on one facade. By doing that, we can lower the cost over $800,000. And we know that there's other value engineering that we can obtain, we just haven't had the time to work through it all yet, but we know there's some savings in the foundation design, the plumbing design, some of the different lighting things. So we think that this particular design can get down around $10,800,000-ish for a contract award. This project could be done in 420 calendar days from now, that would open it in May of 2024. And the last option is if it's important that we stay within that $10 million figure, then the only option we can see is to eliminate a floor. So if you go back to the original design, leave the brick facades and keep that look, but simply eliminate the top floor, you're about $9.9 million. And if you go to the second option and keep that look and just eliminate the top floor, that's the cheapest option at $9.2 million for a contract award. Now, it's important that the contract award is not the only cost we have, there's a chart in your memo that shows some of the other things that we're also going to have to fund and provide for, getting internet there, construction management, buying the parking equipment software, and all the equipment that does the parking management, all those kind of things are additional costs to that. So basically, I think it comes down to, we would recommend, if we want a five-story deck with that many spaces, 397 spaces, then we would recommend this option. If we want to go with a lower price, then I would go with this option and eliminate the fifth floor.
I like option two.
Yeah, the 10-8 is that, plus we think, as Rodney said, there's other modifications we make to actually lower that price a little bit more. And so we're still working on those numbers. Calus has been good to crunch all kinds of options, try and get those numbers down, there's a few questions still working through, but we think they can get that number actually a little bit lower, closer to the.
We don't think we're at the 10 million, but we think we can certainly get it closer, but we think that's going to be the highest side of the number, and at least gets us started to process paperwork, settle on the property, and start moving forward.
So, speaking of that last point, what is the anticipated timeframe in which a contract to commence with the deck would come before this body?
For construction? This month.
Next week.
If that would happen, we would close on the land the first or second week of April, and construction would start towards the last part of April.
Yeah, they would start mobilizing it on the property, stripping the land, that sort of stuff.
So, I'm just going to say it because I have to. I need to be reassured in some manner before I commit to this at this table for a project that is largely going to benefit, largely going to benefit, a significant investment, i.e. the stadium, playing next door. And so I know that there is interest above us as it relates to the amusement tax, and I know that really has nothing to do with you guys, but I'm hard-pressed to sit here and say yes to a contract to meet the expectations of timeframe and escalated costs that we're absorbing. If there are other parties interested in negating what I think was one of those things on that sort of long checklist I had, to say, you know, how are these things going to be applied as we move through the process of this larger project, right? I mean, I said that when we talked about Hood Street, right, when we talked about the deck, and now I think it's the amusement tax, I think there's some legislation that's been introduced to negate that. And so I just need to make sure that I'm not being put on the hook in March only for the other shoe to drop a month or two later, that, you know, we're going to be facing a situation where we're not going to receive the appropriate taxes for those types of activities, you know, from the party that we're clearly partnering to accomplish this with. So, and I know that's not really for you guys to answer, but I think that that's a reality that we have to be comfortable with as a body at this table.
But I don't think that timing is going to, like, we have to approve that now, and that legislation isn't.
You're right. You're completely right.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
For us, I think, we were trying to push this project along because there's already work being done at the stadium site. And the idea was to have this deck ready and open at least in time for the stadium to be open, or shortly before. And so that's the timeline we've been on. If that timeline has changed because of other conditions.
Yeah, I agree, I think we're trying to do everything that we're supposed to be doing at this table to accomplish the goal that I feel like everybody's trying to accomplish. But it just, it hits me with that whole repetitive notion of mine that there is no line in the sand, you know what I mean, that we're not being asked to be flexible on, and here is sort of just another one of those steps that I said was going to come down the pike, whereby we're going to now commit to this, and there's an entity out there saying, eh, we really don't want to pay an amusement tax, when the reality is, we're going to be the ones in every one of the events, no matter what the event is at this venue space, that is going to have to provide those other city services like police and fire, et cetera, that make up a huge percentage of our annual budget.
Well, I'll tell you that the legislation that was put forward is Washington County legislation only, it pertains to no other county in the state of Maryland, so that's always, you know, at that level in Annapolis, usually everybody goes along with that. But, and the problem is, is that Washington County government opposes it also. So not only are we opposing the repeal of the ANA tax, so is Washington County. I don't believe it'll get any legs in Annapolis now because of that.
It's not moving right now.
That's reassuring.
Still not a guarantee.
I just, I just, I'm confused by where it comes from.
I said the same, well, I can fill you in, I'm not going to do that on camera, but I can tell you where it came from.
That was a facetious question.
But it's not the entity that you believe it is.
I just.
You know, the problem is, is that, as I explained, you cannot reach in to any government's general fund and take out anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 of funding, and not have something to replace it with. I mean, you just can't do that to any, I don't care what the government is, you know? So hopefully, the legislation gets, actually gets pulled before it has committed here, so we'll see.
Hopefully it doesn't feel very good.
Well, yeah, it's always difficult, usually when it's, you know, one county only, when it's pertaining to Destat County, there's no blowback from any of the other counties in the state of Maryland against it, but, you know, this county government opposes it also.
So, I'm not, I'm not eager to fast-track this, which is what we should be doing, on hopefully.
Well, I'm eager to move forward on option two.
Oh, I'm good with option two.
I'm good with option two as well.
Well, I believe we need to get moving. I believe that the longer we wait, the worse it gets, the uglier it is, and, you know, you know what, regardless of a stadium project or not, you and I have been on the same page on this project for 20-plus years. So, you know, whether a repeal of the ANA tax, which again, I highly doubt is going to happen, but if a repeal happens, I mean, it doesn't change how we felt about this project for more than 20 years.
It doesn't, it's just going to change how I want to charge users.
Well, I get it, you know, funding has to be figured out after that anyway, it doesn't matter.
Because, you know, we can't charge a fee for the provision of police and fire service.
I get that, I knew that.
And we have other major projects, like the Field House, where that private entity has come in very plainly and said, not only are they putting up their funding, but they're going to pay those requisite and appropriate taxes and fees over that same time period. So I just, it.
Again, again, unless it gets repealed, but yeah, so that's fucking worth those ways. Anyway.
But you guys are good with option two.
I think we need to move forward on option two. I truly, I truly feel that the longer we wait, again, the better.
So you want it on the agenda from March 28?
I believe we need to. Hopefully we'll have an answer.
It's another week, so that'll be helpful.
Another week, I'm going to have two weeks.
Two weeks? Two weeks?
Yes, two weeks.
It's only four.
Option two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Licensing of Transient Housing, Kathy Marr, Director of Planning Code Administration, and Paul Falk, Neighborhood Services Manager. Hello.
Hello.
We're back.
We're back again.
Happy to be here.
To talk about the transient housing here, as we all know, we've talked about this several times in the fall of 18, in the fall of '22 here, just haven't had support with some of the ideas that have been proposed, so the concerns all remain the same with transient housing, nothing has really changed as far as what is the concerns of our community and of city staff here, so it's just the maintenance of the hotels, the fire protection in them, also, you know, people staying in them for extended stay, which they're not designed for, then also, you know, that they're using them as dwelling units, and then also our increased calls for services that we're having at these. So the concerns have remained the same that we've had and that we discussed back in the fall of last year, and also just recently as January. And so, some of the things that happened since we were last in front of you all, that we had some incidents that have occurred at some hotels here just in last month. We are all familiar that there was an incident back on February 6th that ended up the city with the Fire Marshal Office and Code Administration condemning one of our hotels due to unsafe conditions and quality of life that was inside there. The mayor was there that day and saw those firsthand. We had another incident at a hotel that just requested an inspection from the Fire Marshal's Office, and ended up finding out that their fire suppression system was not functioning and had been for several months for an event to occur. And then also, we had an event where a fire occurred at a hotel, there was a kitchen fire, and turned out that we didn't even know that they had kitchens inside the hotel because they converted some units illegally, made them into apartments, and there was a fire in one of those. So these weren't events that the city went out and sought these inspections after discussions in January, these were things that we responded to and just had to take action for them. So with that, with discussions from the last time, and with the recent events, we came up with a new proposal here for your all's consideration, some of the things remain the same. These were things as far as just keeping the human trafficking training in there, also the overdose response program training, also the guest registry prohibitions on the hourly rates, keeping the real estate taxes and property, personal property taxes up to date, and also that your utilities are all up to date as well. None of that has changed, those proposals are still the same. The thing that we were looking at as far as a different consideration on those is that rather than basing things on the calls for service, which was a concern from our community the last time, was looking at taking all of the hotels in Hagerstown and entering them at a tier-one level. A tier-one level would not require any licensing fees, that we would start the program with everyone coming in, they would pay no fees to join the program, we would do an inspection with the Fire Marshal's Office and Code Administration to determine what are the code violations in the property, and then from that, we would do a code violation ratio per room, and that would determine what tier status that you fell into, so it's on how well you maintain your property, this depends on where you fall at on the tier status. And the first year we would do this, we would say it'd be a 0.5 code violation per room, and this does not include the common areas, not the overall systems, this is just where the people would be residing in the property. We know the common halls could have different situations that could have violations with it, but it doesn't affect the quality of life for the people staying in the hotel, this is strictly just per room, and we'll not count those ones. And then the tier-two would be if you were greater than 0.5, and that would go into effect after all the inspections that would occur in 2023, would be January of 2024 is when they would fall into whatever tier category based on inspection results. Now, the council member Bruchy had mentioned about business-friendly approach to stuff, so if someone did fall into a tier-two, meaning that they had a lot of code violations per room ratio, that they would be given an opportunity to make corrections during the time period, and I've met with a hotel owner trying to go over on what they felt would be an appropriate time period to repair them, that they had to make these repairs. They were saying for life safety violations, be about seven days, and for quality of life would be 30 days, so the city would confirm that those items would be repaired in that timeframe, and if they were, they'd go back into the tier-one status, meaning that they were a hotel compliant with the current codes. If they didn't meet those timelines, then of course they would fall into the tier-two status and would remain in that status for that year. So what would that mean then? So if they fell into a tier-one or a tier-two status, then after the code violations? So if it was a tier-one hotel, then they would have basically, you say, a three-year exemption from inspections per this program. That doesn't mean they exempt from a Fire Marshal inspection for a spot check, making sure fire alarm systems and fire suppression systems were in compliance, but on an annual basis, a tier-one would just have to submit those reports to the Fire Marshal's Office for review, then after that review, they can determine if an inspection was needed at the property. They would do two cycles like that of just submitting reports back to the city, letting us know the third-party inspection results of the fire alarm and fire suppression systems, and then on year three, they would have another inspection jointly by Code Administration and the Fire Marshal's Office to determine the code violations per room. A tier-two status would have an inspection just annually by Code Administration and the Fire Marshal's Office to determine just any code violations at the property. And then at that point, they would get regraded as well for whether or not they could be tier-one or tier-two. So if a tier-two hotel maintained their property, did a lot of repairs, and when they had another inspection jointly by us in that next year, if they maintained it below a level, they could become a tier-one. So it's encouraging good property maintenance of a property and making sure they're in compliance with the codes. Now, in the second year or subsequent years that a hotel would be in the program, we would lower the threshold, because the goal is, we don't want to have many code violations. If I'm saying 0.5 violations per room as a ratio, if it's a 200-room hotel, that means they have 100 code violations in their property that are detrimental to the occupants, whether not life safety or quality of life. So we want to lower that threshold after we've gone through initial inspection, they should be maintaining it, so the threshold would lower to 0.25 in a second or subsequent year. The same thing is that their fire suppression systems and fire alarm systems are functioning, because one of the things, doing more research for this. Because one of the things, doing more research for this, is that there's a lot of federal law that's been passed back in the seventies and nineties about maintaining hotels and fire safety. So we want to keep sure, make sure that these are still maintaining standards, not only here in the city of Hagerstown, but also the federal standards. So then once a pro, once a hotel was in the program, how could we keep them more accountable other than putting them into different tier statuses? So the thing would be looking at suspending or revoking a license. With looking at these different jurisdictions and then also different programs that are out there, this has been the area that a lot of jurisdictions have actually beefed up recently to try to give them a little bit more ability to hold hotels accountable. So through suspending a license, that again, we would look at the code violations, but also we would have the calls for service. The, the police, fire and Code Administration and CRS would respond to properties. Because the response for calls for service to a property can affect the quality of life, not only for the people using the hotel as a residence, but also for our transient guests that are visiting the area. If they have a lot of calls for service, that is going to deter the quality of life at that property. So that's again, using as a factor. It's not the sole factor. It's just one of the factors that we can always say, may revoke your, suspend your license. It is a, a shall.
Let me get this straight. This is where my issues come from, alright? So calls for service. Now, I understand that calls for service are related to HPD or HFD. CRS should not count as calls for service. Someone is calling about somebody who overdosed or whatever, okay? First off, HPD and HFD is going to respond to. They always do. So i- if there's a call for service for an overdose victim, and it counts as a call for service against a hotel, that could revoke their license at some point. We're punishing a hotel owner for a crime that we aren't punishing the person who's committing the crime for. We're not charging the person who overdoses because we don't do that. But we're going to charge the property owner, the hotel owner, for that crime. That's what they equate to. So there's got to be a workaround there somewhere when it comes to issues such as that. Now, if there's a disturbance, like a normal disturbance in HPD's call, okay, I get that, you know? But not when it comes to this issue.
And I'd like to piggyback off of that. I, I also have that same concern. And I, I'm curious to know who is responsible to determine what is defined as the call for service that is in violation?
Well, I guess that would all be how the ordinance was written. What would be determined that some ordinances are written where it actually has a written report. Where a written report is created by a municipal employee, being firefighter or a police officer, that has to actually write a report for somewhere, or a code officer has to issue a notice for a call for service. But it's all on how it's defined in the ordinance.
So the ultimate decision comes from code as to define like the, the call for service that goes against the hotel owner?
Correct. As far as like not code our office, but code is what's in the ordinance, how it's written.
When it was the crime free with the police department, they would, officers would submit things upwards, thinking this should qualify as a call for service. And then there was a, a police officer who reviewed them all and said, well, not that one. So there was, there was some kind of oversight, the way that's was reviewed. So it wasn't just everything that came flooding in, three, one, two, three, four. Somebody reviewed them.
And I think that, you know, the, the calls for service, while I understand, I, I do, I understand wanting to reduce the calls for service. You and I spoke about, you know, the other ordinances in other jurisdictions and that it did not reduce the calls for service, that even the ordinances that were put into place. So I feel as if, you know, the, while we're trying to make things safer and for the residents that are staying there and for the transient visitors and things like that, I, I think it's almost like two separate approaches. And in order to reduce the calls for service, we absolutely need are the organizations that support these individuals to help us with those reduction of calls for services. The, the ordinance and these, and the changes and the, you know, submitting of documentation is not going to reduce the need for people to get help and to reduce the things that they're being called for. So I think that it's like, well, I understand to reduce that and to kind of hope for better management of a hotel and what's happening. I don't think that the two match in this ordinance. And we both know that those ordinances that have been put in place in other, in other municipalities, it has not reduced the calls for services.
And that was really only one that we had reached out to, but recently East Baton Rouge and Louisiana just changed their ordinance because they have a very similar hotel environment as that we do here in Hagerstown. And they added that into their ordinance in January of this year to try to give them the ability to be able to address the increased services calls that they're having at hotels because they've had very similar situations that we've had in hotels. So I can just say that ordinances are being, adding it into it. So I don't want us to have that issue.
Are we, are we comparing now the examples? I mean, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, do they not prosecute people who use illegal drugs on the street and have to get called when they overdose?
Or do they have a twenty-four seven shelter? Or do they have any other place for these individuals to go? Because we don't.
I mean, you can't punish, because what's going to happen is you're going to be in a catch twenty-two situation where the hotel owner is not going to be able to call when someone overdoses, okay? And then that phone call is going to have to come, hopefully, from somebody in one of the rooms, alright? In, in order to save this individual's life.
Right. I'll just counter with it. What are the, a lot of the things that we receive concerns from our community members about at our hotels? Are they the code violations or the activities that are occurring at the hotels?
Why did you shut down the APM? Not because of calls for service, because of the situation, because of the fire suppressant system and because of all, it wasn't because there were too many calls for service. So we already were able to shut down and condemn a hotel. And I agree, I mean, I, I want it to be safer. I want it to be better managed. I, I absolutely agree. I, the community wants the same thing. And so do the individuals staying there. But we didn't, we didn't condemn the APM because it was too many calls for services, right?
Well, I think we knew that the APM was on our radar, radar because of homicide at that property, though.
Correct.
And that is why it was on our radar. And so that, that it was a call because of a fire call at the property that led to the pressure system being completely out of commission.
If this ordinance would have been in place, would we, would have, would we have been able to prevent all of that before? Would we have been able to see that it wasn't safe for those individuals to stay there? If this was in place before that, would this have prevented that?
If the original ordinance, if the ordinance was in place in two thousand and eighteen, yes.
Okay.
If it was in place in two thousand and twenty-two, when it was just in passing January, no.
Okay.
Because there were, wouldn't have been that. But there would have been an inspection that would have occurred that would have required.
Over time, then this will like helpful, hopefully eliminate what we had to do at the APM.
Right. And I can never say for sure that it always will catch everything.
Of course.
Because the example you're giving, the fire suppression system was out two to three months. If we would do an inspection in July of that year and the system goes out in December, you know, we just don't know on those scenarios on that stuff. But with the other one, with it being out for eight months, there's a better chance that that would have been called during an inspection. So it's, it's always hard to say, would things be called for sure, yes or no? Can't say for sure, but.
Plus, this program should not be seen as a cure for what's going on. That a second part of this is somebody's got to figure out how to help people get into permanent housing. The hotels that are serving as housing are not designed to be houses. So even if we make sure it's meaning, it's being code compliant, we have people and families living in a little hotel room that was not designed for that. So someone else, we need to figure out, we need to figure out how to get people out of the hotels and not only into more permanent housing, but getting the treatment that they need so that they're not getting calls for services at places like hotels.
But at the end of the day, the likelihood of this resolving individuals, you know, choosing that activity or hotel proprietors, you know, choosing to, to operate in that manner. Agencies choosing to put individuals, individuals choosing to be there long-term. Like to me, like, all of that stuff is sort of outside of our ability to control. For me, I just don't want to pick up a paper and read that, you know, a hotel burned down with seventy people in it because we didn't follow these fifteen things on this piece of paper to make sure that this place of residence, you know what I mean, is, is, that's being operated in a commercial manner, is, is, is being regulated similar to how we regulate other residential structures that operate in a commercial manner. Like, for me, it makes sure that the guest is protected when they secure a room through that guest registry, right? Now I have a name, you know what I mean? I have the, the person paid. I have the duration of stay. Those types of things.
Yes.
It's just common sense. They should happen.
I have never stayed in a hotel without it never happening.
That's what I'm saying. Like, all of that stuff should be.
License plate, everything.
Yeah, all of it. Same.
We should be checking.
I agree. However, whenever we were at the APM, they had people in rooms that they did not know who was where.
No, that's why we're saying we're not.
Like, I feel like the, the code should address these things on this sheet of paper, this sheet of paper right here. Because the other stuff, we're not going to be able to fix that.
You see, I don't see anything going here where it's calls for service.
And I was at a meeting, I guess, it was one or two weeks ago, and Sean Griffith told us that there are seventy-five hundred families in the city of Hagerstown on a housing list. Families, not individuals, seventy-five hundred families. And this, and what we're, is not going to fix that.
But, but there's a reason for that.
I'm just saying, there's, some of them are staying in these hotels, right?
Some of them are living with relatives.
Someone, right. There, it's not all here and.
What I'm saying, though, is, is I take that, that, that number with a grain of salt because if you go right next door to Frederick County, alright? Those lists are open and closed enrollment as those numbers fluctuate. So you go right next door and the number is about four hundred, right? That's because we don't close it. We allow those numbers to build up into the thousands, knowing, knowing full well that we can't, we can't find housing for a thousand, let alone seven thousand. But we won't close the enrollment process. And so we just add numbers to the list. And you got people you may be calling that have been on the list, you know, twenty-four, thirty-six months ago.
I understand. I understand that.
That, that seventy-five hundred number, you know.
Regardless, I'm saying that this ordinance and moving people into more secure and permanent housing, this ordinance is not going to fix that, is my point.
But even if we, we make the hotels as safe as they can, it's still not, it's not the permanent solution for the.
I agree. My objective is to make them as safe as we can.
Because they are paying too much. They are paying too much to stay in these hotels.
Right.
I'm fine with code violations like, like we would do in any rental in this city, okay? But, you, you know, again, you've got two hundred rooms and you've got a hundred and forty of them let. And then you have two people on a weekend who overdose. And you have HFD, HPD, CRS there, and now you've got two occurrences already for calls for service. You know, I mean, that can add up extremely fast and result in the replication of someone's license.
Hey, good. I'll just ask this because I've heard this elected body, this one and previous ones, talk about the city of Martinsburg. And you want their public nuisance ordinance and would love to have the ability to go after drug places and housings and be able to do it.
Right, for wrong places.
Their recent one was a hotel that they had that was specifically for calls for service for their police and stuff. And I've heard this like the body saying that they want similar tools like that. And I'm just saying that we're trying to listen to what this body has mentioned to us to try to address these types of concerns.
Like, for me, I want the HVAC system in good order, right? You want the roof in good order. You want the fire suppression in good order. You want the guest registry process in good order. You know, you want there to be a proper treatment for infestation, like all of those things that make.
New kitchens.
The place, yeah, you want, you want to make sure that you could go in and say, you know what, these haven't been turned into rentals.
Right.
Like the pictures you sent us where they've got wire.
Right.
Just running out holes in the wall, you know, and hanging up makeshift lamps over makeshift kitchens. Yeah, I want all of that to happen in this ordinance. What I'm saying is, I don't think we can write something that addresses those public safety oriented issues that is also going to, to see a, a reduction through that document of overdoses in a specific establishment. I just don't think that's going to happen. I think it may come with time naturally as you apply these standards.
Right.
But I don't think you're going to be able to write something that, that, that attacks and, and, and generates a decline in those instances. I, I just don't. And, and I don't know that saying, well, you know, if, if, if we come out five times, that even if you do all these things, we're still not going to come out five times the next year. I believe we're still going to come out five times the next year because I believe, as Kathy said, that's a completely separate issue. And my goal is to make sure that these places are being operated in the manner they're supposed to be as it applies to the safety that occupants should enjoy while being there.
So here and there, we can certainly remove the calls for service thing from suspending or revocation. But still keeping it where if they have code violations that are out there for a long period of time, that if we suspend a license, then they wouldn't be able to have rooms being, new rooms being rented out. They would have like a thirty-day stay on not renting out more rooms.
Just like you don't with APM right now, right? We get an email this week from APM and they said, hey, we'd like to get back in action. And you said, whoa.
You're not ready yet. Right.
We don't have these seven things done yet. You should stay closed until those seven things are done because by saying, okay, we are creating a public safety hazard with occupants that would then go into those rooms unknowingly, even though we know, you know what I mean, that, that they haven't been addressed. And, and I'm, I'm done with that whole like, you know, good faith effort to say, yeah, you'll probably get to those in the next thirty days. No way.
I also want to say, I'm, I'm very grateful because I understand that this has been a long time and I appreciate all of the effort and the fact that, you know, we, we met with some of the hoteliers and, and I know that there's been a lot of work and a lot of research done into this. So I know that it has not been easy around this table for many years. So I think we're getting somewhere, though, Paul. I think we're getting somewhere.
I think so too. And, and, and with this, like, I, I sat down with one of our hotel owners. It does have to make repairs to go over exhibit one with them. And they did show me random rooms while we were there to see if, you know, were there code violations inside their room. And, and I didn't see any while we were, you know, randomly choosing a couple while we were walking around. And I told them that I would, I would mention that because I was with the Plaza Hotel. So we did check some random ones while we were there that were ready for guests and there was not any violations I saw there. So, so they, they are going to see some things. Now, are things going to come up on any inspections in the first time we go there? I, I believe so, yes. That's going to happen. That was the same with Councilmember Bruchy and Councilmember Alshire was here during rental licensing. That would happen in the first, you know, couple of years. But after that, they, they eventually all work out.
I'd be interested in going.
My, my concern is just that, as we're getting into summer and we just had that BMX presentation here last week where they're expecting hundreds or, you know, maybe a thousand or so people here that are going to look to stay in, in a hotel. That most of us have been involved in a travel sport where we have stayed in places close to the venue that our kids are participating in. I've been burned by that, by thinking I was taking the easy way out and ending up in a place I did not want to be in. I could not imagine after what I saw at the APM suites, what is going to happen when we have people attending these events that stay in these hotels? And if you look on TripAdvisor or Expedia or whatever, they look like they're the flipping Reds.
They look good.
But yet, what these guys that are in the audience here showed me and have to deal with, I would rather live in the woods than have to live in, in these, than have to stay a day in these places. If for no other reason, the code violations that are in there and the bedbugs and all the other garbage that are in some of these places. I just hope that at some point we are able somehow to deal with these places that facilitate the drug use and the repeated drug use. And at some, at some point, whether it be through this or whether it be through the legal system, are able to deal with or through the, the social agency system, we're able to deal with these because they're never going, we're never going to have enough housing to not have to utilize these places. But these places deserve to provide a safe, quality place for folks to stay on a temporary period. We have got to do better in finding more permanent housing for that population. But we cannot continue to allow these, these folks. And, and not all of them are drug users, deadbeats, whatever. We saw people out. We saw people out there that had children with them that had been evicted. The one elderly couple I thought was there, they were traveling, thought they were traveling through, they had been evicted from their apartment, uh, because they had a leak and, and, uh, and it ruined like the floor of their, of their, uh, apartment. And they were kicked out for that, had to find a place to go, the only place they could go was the APM Suites. Thankfully, uh, uh, the mayor and, and Ashley helped them find a place in Martinsburg to live. We cannot be seen as a city that allows that stuff to happen, we just can't.
Is there a possible way, I know we've had organizational meetings in here where the partners all meet with us. Is it possible to, to schedule something where we're directly, we're talking specifically about the hotels? We kind of like talk it, talk about it in a blanket form. So maybe if we, you know, knowing that, because it's not only the BMX competition that's coming, we got stadium events, we have an indoor, I mean.
Softball, soccer people.
All of it, so maybe if there's a way to like direct the conversation to specific to the, in, the individuals staying in the hotels, I think that would be more helpful.
Yeah, I think that, I think that sort of the guest registry side of things, I think, needs to be in here to ensure that we're requiring managers to manage the things they can.
Right.
Yes, I agree with that.
Like, I just feel like that message has to be delivered, and I'm just gonna, I'll just use an idea. Uh, much like, um, uh, I think it was Officer Kendall that did the, uh, uh, the large, um, apartment buildings where they come in and they, they go through, you know, uh, whatever that, that, uh, process was, um, for awareness, um, and participation. And so let's say, let's say, let's say there's 30 hotels in the city, I'll just use that number. And let's say, out of those hotels, let's say it's, it's a $500 or a $1,000 fee a year or every two years to, to, um, provide for this inspection process, right? But if you go through something like Shelley's talking about, where, where, you know, you have these certifications applied, manage the things you can manage and require them to manage the things they can manage, you know, then, then you waive that, uh, still get the inspection, but you know what I mean, like, some type of middle ground where, where, whereby. And I don't know, what was that, uh, program? Like six or seven years ago?
It was a part of Crime Free House.
Yes, but there was a program that you went through, and then if you did, you got something waived.
Trading program.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, you, yeah, you say, okay, you're gonna, you're going to, you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, like, you have a couple of them listed, all I'm saying is you do, you know, a broader array of them.
And, you know, hon- honestly, I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna be completely frank here.
Thank you.
We, we can talk to some of these, we can bring them all in here, we can talk to them, we can, we can do this, we can do that, we can tell them this, but.
I know, I understand that.
They're not gonna listen.
I understand that.
Do they?
Is there an ordinance for them?
I mean, these poor guys, these guys, these guys, I see it every day.
I know, I know.
And, and we're eventually gonna talk to these guys sooner, to, to these, to these people sooner or later. Uh, the ones that are causing, the ones where the issues are, we can see that. We get a report every month on, on, on these calls for service and these issues, and it's the same ones. You don't have to have that talk with everybody.
But I, I, I see it a little bit differently, I understand where you're coming from, but when we all talked about Sheets, Sheets improved, not perfect, not perfect.
Not lately.
But Sheets did.
They will for a little bit.
They will for.
Honestly, they will, they will for a little bit.
If it is a direct conversation, we can only say, we can only hope that, look, we have a project, here's, here's what we need, right? They always say, come to us with what you need. That's what we need, doesn't hurt, it's more focused, at least.
I, I, I guess we're, we're to the point where we're gonna address those issues on that sheet. And don't get me wrong, I have a problem with a yearly inspection on every single hotel.
Safe.
No problem with that.
Me either.
Okay? And I have no problem with dropping inspections, and I have, I have none, I, I don't care about any of that, okay? So the things that hotel owners can take care of and should address for, for life safety and quality of life? Yes, okay? Calls for service, uh, not a fan. Uh, be, be, being a tier two and have to have 24-hour on-site security? Not a fan because we're making them a tier two, all right? Again, they shouldn't be our police department, all right? So I'm good with, again, life safety and quality of life inspections on a yearly basis, and I don't, you know, we should be addressing those, I, I, I want people to be safe, too, so. But, you know, you can't, you can't attach calls for service. And I'm, I'm good with that, whatever we put together like that, I'm good.
Right, that's fine. What, what we can do is that, um, uh, we could put some of this together and just kind of finalize everything back and come back in April then to do some, because I'll be honest, I've, I've talked to the attorneys, they want a little bit more time, uh, so we can come back in April to talk about it in another work session and then, and then maybe have something, you know, for introductions.
And they close calls, we're this close, we're this close.
Have you ever, have you traveled through, I, I don't know what state it is, maybe it's North Carolina, and you go into a restaurant and they have a grade on the front door of the restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that part.
What?
I'm not worried about that.
You're not worried, so if, if through this hole, you take out the calls for service with all this, with all this, with all the code violations, if you, if you assign, you know, if someplace has 30 code violations, they're rated, just like they do on TripAdvisor, just like some of these people write their own on TripAdvisor reviews, and they give them five stars. Would we be able to set up some sort, would, would we be able to set up some sort of a designation where you walk to a particular hotel?
We're applying a designation.
Sure.
No.
Based upon whatever criteria to come back from an inspection. I just, I'm not asking for, I'm just.
I don't think it's.
I'm just trying to make sure that when people go to stay somewhere, that they're staying somewhere safe, and they know what they're getting into before they check into.
If you hold your own feet to the fire on life, you know, quality of life and, and life safety issues, there shouldn't be problems.
And I kind of think that the internet, you know, with its TripAdvisor reviews and things like that kind of give people an indication as to what they're going into, or it should, at least, I don't know.
All right, well.
I think that's hopeful, Paul, this is hopeful, you can't deny it.
Yeah, I already sent an email.
All right, well, city administrator.
All right. I feel like I said enough. So we have County St. Patrick's Day run on Saturday morning downtown, should be a fun time. Uh, registrations, uh, early in the morning, go on the county website, you can see all about that. And then also, as mentioned a couple of times, totes are gonna be delivered in, in the downtown area starting Thursday. If you need an additional tote, um, you can contact the, um, the, the, the trash number, for lack of a better way to say it, at 7398577, extension 106. A lot of the comments on Facebook have to do with the city now costing people their jobs by going to a more automated service. It's not the case.
That was a good one, though.
Yeah, uh, these places have come, the, the, the waste management has come to us and expressed their frustration with being able to find people to do the job, not being able to outfit the right, the, the correct number of, or the, the adequate number of folks on a truck. Uh, this is just a way to help keep that, keep the collection process as clean as possible, and I think it's gonna make a significant difference in, in the cleanliness of downtown. So, uh, you need an additional tote, give Jeannie a call, she'll be anxiously waiting to hear from you starting Thursday at 106, that's it for me.
Can't wait.
Councilwoman McIntyre.
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Bruci.
I have two things, uh, first off, um, I sent a letter, but I want to give the hats off to Sergeant Tom Cox, Officer Jacob Mull, Officer Luke Stannard, Officer Tom Brownson, uh, who had responded to an incident at the Sheetz store Sunday up on, uh, Washington Canyon. Having been in that store when those officers were there addressing an individual, uh, I have to tell you, as much bad rap as police officers get in this country, watching those four dedicated individuals with the patience of Joe handle a situation without locking somebody up and, you know, calming the situation down and, you know, getting business back on schedule again, I, I, I felt really blessed to be living in the city of Hagerstown and having those people watch out for our people. So, thank you very much, those officers. Also, um, I got a complaint from a citizen who was putting up a fence between his alleyway, trying to stove off those individuals who, uh, were leaving needles and used condoms and trash and everything in there. Um, he, he had erected an eight-foot, uh, fence, uh, you know, approximately maybe six feet wide and, and, uh, in, in the front of the property, six feet, six, six feet wide, and back of the property, uh, between the houses so that he could, you know, keep that area secure. And, you know, now, um, you know, he applied for, he, he was stopped by a code enforcement inspector officer who said, you know, do you have a permit? And he said, well, no, I don't have a permit, so he had to go apply for a permit. Didn't give him a stop work order, which I applaud him for, but also knew he was erecting an eight-foot fence, uh, which is against code. So he should have even stopped him from continuing to do that. But I, I believe, and city minister and I have had this conversation, I believe we need to have a, uh, a, a work session to talk about issues when it comes to certain areas, what people need to do to protect their property. And, you know, again, you drive by there, you can't really see it, um, you gotta stop. I had to stop and take a picture, first I had to find it, then stop to take a picture. Uh, but, uh, it's not, it's not ugly, it's not hideous, it's actually a, a nice black vinyl coated, uh, fence, but we have to, we have to do something about that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burnett? Councilmember Alshar?
Um, two things, uh, one is to piggyback on Bob, I, I had a chance to look at it as well, and I think that you generally have to recognize two things, one is, you know, every part of the city isn't the same, right? And so, so, you know, you have different parts of the city that, that function in different ways, look different ways, and, and, and folks, you know, use their property. I think I said the same thing when we talked about campers the other week, right? You just can't apply that single standard citywide to every, every block and every lot. Um, and it, it, you know, it's almost something of a construction of a nature that you would likely see in what I'll call the more urban area of the city, uh, because there's a lot of businesses that have, you know, similar things erected for, for storage of, of, of their refuse containers in the rear or other things. For me, you know, and I, I, I go to an example I can think of in Funkstown, where I used to go to, to, to the, uh, the tavern there on the corner, and you'd park in the back and you'd come through between them two houses, and there was always there. Uh, and it had a similar type of, of, of stockade block to it, um, fencing. And it does, it kind of provides a little more privacy to the property owner that, you know, happens to have property in a much more confined space. Um, and, and so I think, yeah, I think it's, it's worth looking at, um, you know, as long as it can be done in a manner that, that's, you know, presentable and improves it, and doesn't negatively impact public safety that might have to get, you know, uh, you know, uh, in front of and in back of the buildings. Um, the other thing is, I just, I, I don't know that we said this last week, and so I just wanted to, to say it. Um, uh, thanks to the, the 19 folks that submitted their names for consideration for the council. You know, I've been through, I guess this will be the fourth time I've had to do this, and there's no perfect way of doing it ever. Um, you'd like to interview, you know, uh, the entirety of candidates that submit names, uh, but, but, you know, that isn't the way that it happens. Um, and, and I think that, that we do as good a process as we can, uh, we're, I mean, at the end of the day, we're simply fellow citizens that are sitting up here, you know what I mean, trying, uh, to make, uh, those decisions, uh, no differently than we do on any other subject matter. And so I applaud all of the folks for living in the city, for wanting to get engaged, for, for putting their names in the hat, um, and, uh, certainly encourage, uh, those folks to remain interested and, and, you know, uh, do so again at the next election.
Thank you. I just want to say, um, thank you to Brother Andy for bringing down the youth corps, and those guys that are in the audience, you guys have done a great job the last hour during the interviews. So thank you to the parents as well, with the little people. It's surprising how quiet you guys have been with, with all the stuff, so good job. Um, the Maryland Municipal League essay contest for if I were a mayor for fourth graders, the deadline is March 31st. Um, I stopped by Eastern Elementary last week, um, and they were awesome, too, had great questions, um, also good solutions, too. Really, really, really good solutions. Um, and, uh, it is also, it's AmeriCorps Week, um, but it's also Girl Scouts Week. And so on Sunday, I gave a proclamation at the Family Ministries for Troop Number 47888, um, and they currently meet at Parkside Community Center on Fridays, and Anastasia and Asia are their troop leaders. And it was very awesome, and they gave me flowers and free cookies. That was, that was a, that was a good, yep, cookies, not talkies, cookies, I like talkies, too. And with that, oh, oh, today, trash cans blowing. Um, I just want to say that if you see somebody's trash can that blows, like, you know, kind of like stop, maybe, if you can, and pick it up. I've seen people, you know, running over trash cans, hitting them, um, yeah, it was just a mess. And then another thing, the blowing, the wind's pretty strong, the blowing of trash. Um, if you get some time, just, I seen a couple of my neighbors out when I was leaving grabbing trash. Just be a good neighbor, pick up some trash, and with that, we are.
Your adjourning from work session, we're going back in.
And I need a motion.
Yes.
Yep, so with that, I'm adjourning from this work session, and I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss, to go back into. I need a motion to go back into executive session, that was paused for the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right, just need a few minutes, we're gonna go into closed session. Krista, do you have enough?